I call to order the April 13, 2015 Latrobe City Council meeting. Please stand for the pleasure of the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands my nation and my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I ask for a moment of silence to give thanks, to relax, or to just quietly find your thought. Ask for guidance. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Buck.
Mr. Jim Angelo?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Caldwell-Bradner?
Here.
Mr. Scipora?
Here.
Mr. Baldwin-Harry?
Here.
Ms. Beazey?
Here.
Mayor Wolford?
Here.
All present.
May I have approval of the minutes from the March 9th?
Before we move into business, could we take just a few moments for the public hearing?
Oh, certainly.
That's scheduled for this evening. Madam Mayor, members of council, there is on the agenda a proposed ordinance increasing a service fee for roll-off tipping from $35 to $40. Our Home Rule Charter requires us to have a public hearing any time we increase a rate or service charge. Therefore, I did advertise for a public hearing. If anybody wishes to offer comment regarding the proposed ordinance that is on the agenda, now would be the time to do it. Would you please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and again, offer your comments.
Dave Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe. I was just wondering how we're doing with the income at the station compared to the late last couple of years? Have we gone down, or have we maintained a pretty good income?
It's been somewhat steady, although it's starting to pick up now. You know, the last, I think the last weekend was a good weekend.
Thank you.
Any other comments from members of the audience? Madam Mayor, members of council, hearing no further comments, the public meeting will be ended at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. May I have approval of minutes from the March 9, 2015 meeting?
I move minutes of the March 9, 2015 meeting be approved and accepted, and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk, where they will be available for reading and inspection to everyone.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I have approval of the fiscal department reports and the paid bills for the month of March, month of March, 2015?
So moved.
May I have a second, please?
No, seconded.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions?
Yes, one question that I ask. Ms. Buck, is there anything that we're paying this month that's outside of the scope of the budget?
No.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I have two proclamations that I'd like to read. The first one, recognizing National Osteopathic Medicine League, whereas there are currently more than 86,000 licensed osteopathic physicians in the United States, and whereas DOs have made tremendous contributions to the American healthcare system since osteopathic medicine was founded by Andrew Taylor Steele, M.D., DO, in 1874, and whereas DOs have a strong tradition of ensuring patients in all parts of the country have access to healthcare, particularly in rural and medically undeserved, underserved communities, and whereas DOs believe that a person's lifestyle, including their homework and social environments, play a significant role in the health of that individual, and whereas DOs practice a hands-on, whole-body approach which includes osteopathic manipulative medicines to diagnose health problems, treat dysfunctions, preserves good health, and prevents the spread of disease, and whereas DOs who treated U.S. presidents, Olympic athletes, contributed to the fight against AIDS, and served on nationwide healthcare panels, and whereas Latrobe's practicing osteopathic physicians are dedicated to improving the health of their community through education and awareness-based efforts, as well as by delivering quality health services, and whereas the citizens of the city of Latrobe recognize the need for osteopathic physicians who are committed to improving the health of all Americans. Now therefore, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Latrobe, we, Latrobe Council, do hereby proclaim April 19 through 25, 2015 to be National Osteopathic Medicine League, and urge all citizens and community organizations to support this observance by helping to educate residents of ODOs in osteopathic medicine. We have hereunto set our hands and seals under the great seal of the city of Latrobe this 13th day of April in the year 2015. And the second proclamation deals with the Equal Pay Act and Title VII of the Civil Rights Act. Whereas forty years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act and Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, women and minorities continue to suffer the consequences of inequitable pay differentials, and whereas, according to statistics released, full-time working women in 2012 earned only 77 percent of the earnings of year-round full-time working men and women managers in seven of 10 industries surveyed actually lost ground in closing the wage gap between 1995 and 2000. And whereas, after controlling for rank, age, credentials, field of study, and other factors, full-time female faculty members of educational institutions earn nearly 9 percent less than their male counterparts, and whereas the average annual earning for women in District 12 of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania are 77 percent of that of men in the same district which, over a woman's working lifetime, results in the American woman and her family losing $700,000 to $2 million in wages, impacting Social Security benefits and pensions, and whereas, fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue costs or hardship in both the public and private sectors, strengthening the security of families today, and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy, and whereas Tuesday, April 14, symbolizes the time of year in which the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now therefore, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Latrobe, the mayor and Latrobe City Council do hereby proclaim April 14, 2015 as Equal Pay Day in the city of Latrobe, Westmoreland County, State of Pennsylvania, and urge our citizens to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force, and further encourage businesses to conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure women are paid fairly. We have hereunto set our hands and seals under the great seal of the city of Latrobe this 13th day of April in the year 2015. Thank you. At this time, we will move on to our citizens' requests section of the agenda. Any citizen that has a comment, please come to the microphone. Items that deal with the agenda at this time, please state your name and address.
Dave Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe. I see on the planning and development portion here on the agenda meeting, to authorize the city manager or designated board up and secure the structure at 509 Ligonier Street. Maybe you could explain a little bit exactly what that's for, since I guess it's a private residence and, you know, if it's going to cost us anything, I think it's...
That's the Latanzio Bakery. We had to board it up because of a safety issue. The front, one wall of the building's brick is falling down, and we had to secure it so no one could hurt.
Is the city paying for that, or is the owner paying for that?
The city's paying for that, but the owner's getting rid of the property, so it'll be taken care of and demolished.
Okay. That's the only thing I have left, is the agenda going to be changed at all, or tonight, any changes in the agenda that we're going to talk about?
Not that, we have plans. We don't have anything planned. If it comes up, though, you have a comment.
Thank you very much.
Any other citizens' requests, other comments? Committee reports. Finance, Mike, Madeline? Anything?
Wayne, we're currently moving through the budget at a, we're through one-fourth of the year, one-quarter, approximately, for the end of March. Your aspirations of how we're progressing through in our spending and our income?
I look, the person that asked me a question about this, I look, we're a little bit ahead on revenue stream. We're in line with our expenses, so we're doing fine. We had up the last year with a little bit of a deficit, or a little bit of, I'm sorry, revenue over our expenses of about $150,000, so we're in a good position.
Thank you.
Public safety? Julie, Jared?
Everyone watch meeting, May 4. We're looking for volunteers to step up and join the neighborhood lunch.
Personnel? Anything?
We have before us tonight a tentative agreement on the CDA for the Ask Me employees of the city. I wish I could say that I've had a bigger part in this, but unfortunately, the way that work and life turned out, Wayne and the other members of committee, along with the mayor, did a fine job in bringing this tentative agreement to us tonight, and we're going to, it's in the agenda tonight, so allow that to vote.
I just want to add that Wayne did most of the work. I think I made as many meetings as you did, Mike. I think I made one, I think you made one.
I appreciate that, but I do think Mayor and I played good cop, bad cop.
Well, we did do that.
But we can do it all with emails and communications, and it's only you which has helped get us to this point, I believe.
Code Works? Madeline, Jared?
Nothing.
Okay. Community Development, anything? Bailey, Julie? Tristan? Any Board and Authority reports?
Hi. I'd like to weigh in on the Act 537 meeting that we had. There wasn't a Act 537 meeting held in. New stand on Friday, Mr. Kelly, Wayne, and I represented the city, and has to deal with the water authority, and it appears that we now have an agreement between all of the entities involved, and that agreement just came in writing, and it looks like we're going to need to get it done by the end of June to have the city agree to our portion of it, just as we did sometime last year, and there was one hangout with Unity Township Municipal Authority and the supervisor. The supervisors have now agreed, Unity Township supervisors have now, prior to the meeting on Friday, they came to consensus and agreement that they liked the Act 537 plan, and they've been changing and amended a little bit, and we agree to it as well. We being, Mr. Kelly?
We being?
Wayne and I agree to that meeting. We have to, it's been put in writing in front of us here, so we'll have to take some kind of action on later, but that would be the Board and Authority report for the water authority.
If I may, the agreement that you see before you is a draft. I would suspect the final agreement will be very close to that, but it is being submitted to all the solicitors and the parties that were at the meeting. So we're now at that stage of reviewing the document, making sure it includes everything that needs to be included, and then there will be a point in time, as Mr. Scipora said, when a motion or a resolution will be presented to council to approve that agreement, and we did agree to try to have this done prior to the end of June.
As you recall, back in February, there was a meeting similar to this, where everyone in the room except one or two people thought there was an agreement, and then it really snowballed apart from there. So this time, I have to say that Solicitor Unity Township, Gary Falto, took it upon himself to ask everyone in the room, "Do you yes, or do you no? Do you yes, agree, do you no, not agree with what we have just talked about and agree on?" And so that is what is, he put together and wrote it, and after he went around person by person asking, "No."
I just have one comment on Latrobe and the Latrobe School District Park and Recreation Commission. I'd like to ask the council, maybe at the May Agenda Prep meeting that we seriously discussed, whether or not we have the funds. Wayne's looking to see if he can find some funds to assist in towards the Lincoln Avenue Trail. We did make a contribution of $35,000. They are still short. They were expecting another $35,000 from the city, but we didn't actually commit to that. So we can spread out any contribution we give them probably over a two-year period. So I would like this council to at least consider, maybe if we could, if we find the money and if it doesn't overtax us, it's not budget an issue, but maybe $10,000 this year and $10,000 next year to help them towards the completion of the Lincoln Avenue Trail, which should be starting shortly. That's all, I think. Anything else on Board and Commissions? Board and Authority reports, rather. Department reports. Joe?
Couple things real quick. We have concrete plants now for an E-Waste Collection, May 16. That'll be 8 o'clock to 12 o'clock, all electronic products, basically anything that has cord, and it'll be held down at the stadium the same as it was last time. We accepted and approved a contract with Piper's Lawn Service, a contract for three years, that is going to do all of our grass cutting and assist the code officer in all of her violations as far as weeds and grass in lots that have been left go. And sometime later on this week, I hope to have Ligonier Street Sweeper here in town. As you all know, ours has been kaput for over a year. That's why we haven't got out there yet, but we're on the list, and we'll be getting their sweeper in sometime this week, and we can start cleaning up the downtown, and then branch out and start cleaning up the rest of the town.
Is there a possibility that we could, like, post a schedule or something in the paper so that people could perhaps, you know, if they know the sweeper's coming on a certain day, move their cars off the, you know, if they can, move their cars so that the sweeper can get closer to the curbs? Is that a possibility, you think?
What we've always run into, we've tried that a few times in the past, is basically every family has two or three cars in their family anymore, and it's just tough finding a place for them to park. They're going to have to park a block away, two blocks away somewhere.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying, I think if we know when they're coming through a neighborhood, if we advertise it, the people that can move will move, and the ones that can't, can't. I don't know. It's just, what do you guys think?
We could try to do something like that.
No, I mean, if they can't, they can't, but, and there's no penalty if they can't, but, hey, the sweeper's coming today, you know, so... Yeah, right. Do you think we could try that?
Sure.
See how it works?
Sure.
Thanks, Joe. Is that it?
That's it.
Before I go on, I want to jump back for one. I'd forgotten, under Board and Authority reports, that I wanted to make a comment about the Latrobe community revitalization. I hope many of you have seen in the paper that the new street signs are in. The first one is up next to Del Frederick Funeral Home. The Del family has purchased that, and Joe and his guys installed it. It's really nice. I urge you to take a ride over and take a look at it. Our plan at LCRP is to get as many of those things up and about. You can purchase them for your, you know, as in memory of a family member. You can get your block to go together and donate. Right now, we're not using any tax dollars for that. It's on a donation basis. We're going to try to raise money to get those up, and hopefully, in time, will happen throughout the community. So take a ride over, it's really nice. That's all. I'm sorry about that, I forgot. Please, Jim Boomer, chief?
Prior to the holidays, I was approached by an individual who was concerned with some of these police-citizen relationships that were going on across the country. Of course, we had Ferguson in New York, things like that, that were causing a real problem between some of the citizens and some of the police departments across the country. An investor approached this individual and said he would like to produce a video that would be pro-police and ask the police department if we would be interested in doing the video. It was being professionally done in a studio, and I was to write a script, and it was to be edited by the producer. To make a long story short, Mike Wigan, Michelle Preston, and I got together, made a script, and we did have a video produced. It's a three-minute video, it's on YouTube. It's been very well received. I think everyone should watch it. I'm very proud of it, very proud of the department and the message that comes across. It's on YouTube, and it's also on Latrobe TV. I was going to show it tonight, but I couldn't get internet up here.
That's what I was going to ask you, I thought we were going to...
Yeah, I had it all set up in the screen and everything, but I couldn't, it wouldn't connect for the internet.
It doesn't work in this room? We don't have internet up here?
We did.
Paid the bill.
We paid the bill for it? Okay, well, that's another subject. I know.
It's Wi-Fi.
It's Wi-Fi, yeah.
I was told yesterday that our walls are too thick.
Okay. Well, I've seen it, and I encourage you to go...
Some people get it sometimes.
Encourage you to go to the Latrobe Police Department Facebook page, it's on there, YouTube video. It's really, really terrific. Jim and Michelle and Mike did a wonderful job, as did Hank Bachman Productions and whoever the gentleman was that funded it. It's really professional and wonderfully done, so congratulations, Jim. It's a nice job. Anything else? Chief Brazili?
Just one thing, Madam Mayor, to answer some of Mr. Miller's questions on the property down there at 509 Ligonier Street. I was called there by the neighboring residents. They had some concerns on the back elevation of that property, and when I went down that elevation in the rear of the Latanzio Bakery, there had probably a 12 to 18-inch bow in the wall. There were small children playing, and I instructed them to keep their children and move their vehicles away from that location. The next day, we got all those rains, and the wall had collapsed by then, and I had left a message with Ann, because it was a weekend, and I turned it over to her and Joe to take a look, along with the city engineers, but it was in pleasurable conditions as far as collapsed conditions, and it became public safety to the people on the front street and in the rear of that elevation, so, and it was wide open, so there was a lot of things that were gone wrong there, and just a lot of water was getting in, so, Mr. Miller, just to answer some of your questions, it was reported to me, and then I turned it over to Joe Bush, the public works, and Ann, our co-officer, to move forward with what they did. So it was, it was more of an urgency to get something done with that immediately.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, chief?
That's it.
Co-enforcement, Ann?
No, I was going to bring a little on it, but he did, so.
Sorry, Ann.
Way to tag team, you guys.
You didn't miss anything.
I'm sorry, Ann.
You stole her thunder. Oh.
Well, she can kick me later.
Oh, won't be the first time. Okay. Anything else? Mr. Kelly?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item appears, the agenda under the Administration Finance Department. It is an ordinance which has been duly advertised. It's entitled, "Amending Section 348 of Chapter 3 of the Administrative Code Fee Schedule, Specifically Schedule C, Municipal Waste Disposal Fees and Rates, Now Therefore Be Enacted and Remain." Section 1, that the Code of Ordinance is Chapter 3, Section 348 Fee Schedules, being the same as hereby amended, to as Schedule C Municipal Waste Disposal Fees and Rates. Section 2, that Fee Schedules, Schedule C Municipal Waste Disposal Fees and Rates, as set forth in Schedule C, being the same as hereby adopted as the fees or charges or rates for municipal waste disposal. Section 3, mayor and/or city manager and/or city secretary be entered hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary, carried to effect within ordinance. And Section 4, that any and all other ordinances or resolutions inconsistent here with, being the same or hereby repealed. Section 5, any other provisions of the Code of Ordinance is not specifically repealed by or inconsistent with the provisions of this ordinance, shall remain in full force and effect, and the ordinance shall become effective upon the date of post enactment publication of notice of passage. There are only two things that this ordinance does. It moves all of the waste disposal fees to Schedule C under Section 348, which is something we've been doing over the last year or so, getting all the fees in one place, and the other thing it does is it does increase the tipping fee from $35 to $40. That's it. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the, or the ordinance, enacted ordinance, is outlined by the Solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Thank you both. Any questions or discussion?
I have a question. Mr. Kelly, does the Schedule C list that $40 charge?
Yes, it's...
Oh, yeah.
If you look where it says "Roll-off box service" on the left, number 12, then you go to $190 per trip, plus the prevailing tipping fees currently, assuming council passes, $40 per ton. That's what we agreed on Schedule C. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Buck?
This is ordinance 2015-5. Mr. Jim Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Scipora?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin-Harry?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Bradner?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
537th.
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is a resolution. It's also under Administration Finance, and it's entitled, "Approving Collective Bargain Agreement Between the City of Latrobe and Ask Me AFL-CIO Council 83 Local 629." Whereas the collective bargaining agreement shall be in effect from January 1, 2015, to June 30, 2019, whereas the city desires to approve the collective bargaining agreement, now therefore be resolved. Section 1, that a collective bargaining agreement between the city and Ask Me AFL-CIO Council 83 Local 629, as evidenced by a letter of tentative agreement, although I should change that, we actually do have the agreement here tonight. Attached heretofore, a term commencing January 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2019, being the same, is hereby approved, and Section 2, that the formal collective bargaining agreement, bodying the terms and provisions of the tentative agreement, shall be prepared and submitted for review by the city manager and solicitor upon approval of the bargaining agreement. The mayor, the city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign the collective bargaining agreement to take any and all action necessary to carry to effect this resolution resolved in council to state. I would add that the agreement has been prepared. I believe it's been approved by the city manager. I will certainly look at it, and I see no reason why my approval will not be given. So we are basically now seething by this resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement which will be attached to it.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion?
Do we know if the Ask Me has ratified this yet?
Yes, they have. They did last Tuesday. As I understand, all vote for, no vote against?
I just want to add one comment. I just want to add one comment. I just want to thank the members of the negotiating committee, as well as Wayne and the members of council that helped on this project. It took a while, as collective bargaining does, but I think we have a good contract. I think anyone that's been involved in collective bargaining knows that if you walk away with it and you're both not real happy and not real sad, then you've got a good deal. I mean, we didn't get everything we wanted, they didn't get everything they wanted, but we met somewhere in the middle and I think that's what negotiating is all about. So, I want to thank the negotiating committee for their hard work and the city employees for ratifying this agreement. Any other comments, questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2015-12. Mrs. Kogel-Kradner?
Yes.
Ms. Beasy?
Yes.
Mr. Boldnerin?
Yes.
Mr. Jervanangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Thirty-seven yes.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, the next item under Administration Finance is a resolution entitled "authorizing the City Manager to sign a whole harmless agreement for the fireworks display for the Fourth of July Committee. Whereas each year the Latrobe Fourth of July Celebration, Inc., a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, holds many events celebrating the Fourth of July, one of which is the fireworks display. Whereas Lehigh Specialty Melting permits the use of its land to conduct the fireworks display. Whereas each year, Lehigh Specialty Melting requests certain entities to indemnify and hold it harmless for any liability or damage resulting from the fireworks display. Now therefore be resolved. Section 1, Council of the City of Latrobe does hereby approve and ratify the action of the City Manager in signing the whole harmless agreement for the July 4th fireworks display proposed by Lehigh Specialty Melting, Inc., in the form attached heretofore. Section 2, the Mayor, City Manager, City Secretary and any other proper city officer be entered hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved in Council of this State." The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Because everyone knows this is something that we do, I'm sorry, Mike, we do year after year, so, and we've been doing it how many years now, 45 or something like that? Excuse me, I forgot to shut my phone off. Mike, did you have something you wanted to add?
I was going to add, we're going to say the same, it's something that we do every year for this.
Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2015-13. Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mr. Jervanangelo?
Yes.
Ms. Beasy?
Yes.
Mrs. Kogel-Kradner?
Yes.
Mr. Boldnerin?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Thirty-seven yes.
And one other thing before we go, Mr. Kelly, I just want to thank Lehigh Specialty Melting for allowing the city to use that property.
I know, I think they've given us their permission at least from the 1990s, so it's been waiting a while. Madam Mayor, Members of Council, the next item on the agenda is a simple motion and it reads under Administration Finance and it reads, "I move we authorize the City Manager to place an advertisement for the city transfer station in the greater Latrobe Laurel Valley Chamber Book for a cost of $300."
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, what's the, how are we going to consist of?
It's an advertisement for the transfer station, which is now going, for now going to be called the Recycling and Refuge Center. For now.
For now?
Till we find a better name.
Do you know what the address is going to be?
It's a quarter base. Yeah, it's a good opportunity, we're going to take it out of the transfer funds, the transfer departments, Mrs. Lane's expense budget. It's a good opportunity to advertise the transfer station. We're finding out that a lot of the people that are going to the station up there are not from the city of Latrobe. They're from Laersville, they're from a lot of places, so this will help.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The last item under Administration Finance is a resolution. It's entitled "authorizing the City Manager to sign an agreement with Municipal Publications for a city map and whereas Municipal Publications previously contracted with the city to provide approximately 5,000 copies of the city map funded through advertisements, whereas the city would bear the cost of mailing a copy of the map to all residences and businesses, whereas the city now desires to update the map with Municipal Publications to be distributed to residents and business. Now therefore be resolved. Section 1, the Council of the City of Latrobe, everybody authorizes the City Manager to sign a map project agreement form attached as Exhibit A. And Section 2, that the City Manager and/or Secretary of the City and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution. The agreement is attached, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined."
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
Are we going to mail those or is the service going to mail those? Do we have to mail them or do we have to bear the burden to get them to the residents?
We bore the cost of getting it to the residents. At the moment, I have to say I'm assuming by mailing, but I could be wrong. I have to look now, there is no cost to producing it. The production cost is through the.
Ann seems to know the answer.
We let the company use our, whatever the code is for ball grade and they put it on each one and sent it out. So, we really, we personally didn't.
They mailed.
Mail them. They mailed them, but they used.
Use our ball grade?
Yeah.
So, there's no cost to the city?
There's a cost, yeah.
Or is there a cost?
Yeah.
Oh, the ball grade, it's like.
The cost, the last time, they mailed about 3,520 pieces, it was $1,072. That's how many pieces they mailed out using the ball grade. The thing with the map is it's about two and a half years old as dated. And like I said, with them getting the people, individuals in town to pay for the cost of producing it, you know, it's actually a nice advertisement for the city.
For the businesses that advertise?
We may actually, we.
For the businesses that advertise?
Right. It's also good for the city in general.
Right.
We also may actually wait until January to finalize the program because there's going to be some changes in a number of positions.
What do you mean?
Well, for example, one of the things is it lists city council.
Oh, right, right, yeah, yeah.
Best of late.
Yes, best of late.
It's only a few ones.
Yeah. Okay, that will build in the budget, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one. And now the map is just for the city of Latrobe and it just goes to the city of Latrobe residents.
Right. And businesses. My business.
And businesses, okay. It's within the city of Latrobe.
And businesses can be outside. Ann, do you remember on the old map if there were, there were people outside of the city advertising on that?
Now, the people can advertise, but we don't mail it to them.
We don't mail it out.
We mail it, only mail it within the city.
Is your question, who gets it?
Yeah, my question is, like, I've lived here for 50 years, I don't really need a map for the city of Latrobe. I know where to go. No, I'm serious. So, why, instead of mailing it, couldn't we put it on a sign outside or, you know, just put an ad in the paper that maps are ready if anyone would like to pick them up? And a good time would be to have them out would be when they're paying their real estate taxes.
One thing that we did last time, and I don't know if you want to do it again this time, but we actually had 5,000 maps. We only mailed out ball grade 3,200, I think. So, there were, if I'm not wrong, a fair number of maps left over, which could be the maps then to be distributed to people outside of town.
Well, I think we, if I'm not mistaken, I think if someone does come in and need a map, don't we sell it to them or if they're not?
Not those ones.
Not those?
They're free.
Do you have about 4,000 people paying their bills, they will get a map, take it down there.
Which is what I'm saying, you have people coming in and taking, you know, paying their garbage bills or picking up their, you know, I mean, I think that'd be a good cost, savings for the city to just have them pick it up at the window if they want a map.
That's why I questioned in the motion, it says we have to mail it to them. Can we bear the burden of getting it to them, whether that's having them come here not to pick it up, you know?
I think, all right, the thing, keep in mind that this is a way for businesses to advertise, if you will, to the residents, or to save, or vote themselves to the residents who do get the map for free. I mean, the businesses pay for the net creation of the map.
I'm not sure the businesses will be as interested in paying for the advertisement if there wasn't some guarantee that it was getting to all those households. I mean, a lot of people mail their payments in and things like that, so I don't know. I mean.
I'm sure that's part of the advertisement, is if you advertise, it's going to go out to every resident in the city.
Right.
Which is a very strong, you know, advertising ad.
And we do, and, you know, unlike you, I mean, I know, I think I've lived, you know, I've lived here my whole life, too, I know pretty much where everything is, but there's new businesses popping up all the time and I'm surprised sometimes when I see what's out there. And plus the fact that there are a lot of residents that haven't lived here as long as we do, so I think it's a good service. I think it's a good way for us to help advertise our local businesses for a pretty minimal cost, but, you know, I think, I think we just vote on it. No else to do. So, we have a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
Ms. Buck?
This is.
Yes.
Oh, is this a resolution? Yeah, it's a resolution, I'm sorry.
Pay attention.
This is Resolution 2015-14. Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mr. Boldnerin?
Yes.
Ms. Beasy?
Yes.
Mrs. Kogel-Kradner?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jervanangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Thirty-seven yes.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, the last item under the Planning and Development Department, which is the motion, reads, "I move we authorize the City Manager who is designated to take all appropriate action to board up and secure the structure located at 509 Ligonier Street in Latrobe, PA."
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That's it?
That's everything.
Any unfinished business, council members? Any new business we need to discuss? Wayne, you have anything? Council members, anything? At this time, we'll have our open forum citizens' requests, so if there's anything on your mind that you'd like to discuss, Jim, go up to the microphone.
Thank you. James Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue. I was glad to hear that the buildings that are dilapidated in Latrobe that were finally taking some action about getting them boarded up or torn down when they were. I think about a year ago, or maybe even longer, we had talked about, or Council had talked about looking over all of the ordinances in that area, the zoning ordinances, and having them updated to make it a stronger ordinance that we could take stronger action for people that don't take care of these properties. I know that at 125 East Fourth Avenue, there's a pine tree that's probably 50 feet high, it's leaning and leans further every year, and it's going to come down and it's going to take the wiring out of two different properties and hopefully no kids are around the area when it comes down. And I know that a letter was sent out to the property owner and I appreciate that Ann said that I was telling them there was a safety hazard, but evidently that there's some type of a problem that can't be torn, that it can't be taken down or the city can't take it down or something. But I think if it's related to safety, I think it's our responsibility. And that's one of the, that's one of the areas in which the Neighborhood Watch gets involved in. If they see areas in town that are hazardous areas, that they're supposed to report those. And I don't know if John has stopped over and saw the tree and how it leans in that there, but it may not be a bad idea because it's possibly going to hurt somebody if it comes down. And I would imagine that if it comes down and knocks out some wiring, power wiring, you could have some surges. You could have some fires. It's a real safety hazard, I think. And I've been talking about it and I hope that something finally gets done. Thank you very much.
On that note, Jim, and I'm glad you brought that up because it reminded me, you know, a year or so ago, the city of Latrobe, I think, was probably first or one of the first to enter into an agreement with the county to be, participate in the land bank. And there is some movement on that. And Ann, can you update us a little bit on what's going on? I mean, I know there's two properties right now that are close.
Yeah, they're in the final stages of the land bank gaining possession of them. And when that happens, then one will be torn down and one will be hopefully rehabbed and sold.
Good start. Good start.
I just hope the tree doesn't fall down in the interim.
Well, I don't think it's one of those, though. I don't think.
I don't think the land bank probably tears down trees.
No, 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 that's something unrelated, but I'm talking about the dilapidated houses.
Yeah.
Anything else, residents?
You know what, I'd like to say something. Why don't you dig right up that tree? Who owns the property on the creek bank? In that little building that's down there? There's a tree, the tree that was beside it is probably, I mean, it fell over. Who owns that? Or was it ever reported to you yet, Joe, or anything?
That was reported to me and we got it, because it really wasn't causing any danger, I mean, it was already down. We're going to probably someday this week remove it. We're going to pull it back with a high lift away from the back. It's our responsibility and cut it off. We're going to do it in-house.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering, I mean, I actually just happened to see it because it's down a little bit further from where I always go.
Ann had reported it to me last week.
Yeah, okay. I was wondering about it. Thanks.
I want the tree in the creek, right under the bridge.
Pardon me?
A tree that's in the creek, right before the bridge, Kennametal Bridge.
Yes.
Whose responsibility is that?
Mother Nature. Hopefully another.
Hopefully another storm will take care of it.
It moved it this last one.
City managers' report. Wayne?
Just a couple items. First of all, we received the $500 from West Penn Power to buy supplies to do some projects around the city. We're going to start on the LEDs, I think, in a week or two and in the fire hall and in the ambulance area. We're already set up for a rebate of about $1,650 on that one. So, we'll get, we should have a payoff in about two and a half hours between the rebate and the savings in energy from the LEDs. We're going to have a pension committee meeting. There's two committees on the board here, they're going to be there.
Donuts.
What's that?
Donuts.
We'll bring that. April 21st at 8:00 AM, we're having our first committee meeting for the pension. The bank is going to be there and there'll be about one police officer, two council members, myself, the board, who didn't know that, that she was going to be there. We'll have our first committee meeting. And then, just a side note, the sign revenue, we've cut to about $200 or so far with the signs, so, it's, you know, it's slow, but it's starting. And most of the advertisements have been the fire companies now, but that's good, too.
I like knowing where the next toky cell is, by the way, so does my dad. We were late the other day, though, the last time we, they were gone. It's like 11 o'clock, they were gone.
Yeah. Yeah.
We advertised on it, and I think it was very, very, I think, well, I'll tell you after Thursday, you know, because that's our night, if it was tonight.
You advertised on it for what?
We're doing an informational night at the library, the ARC is, and so we advertised on the sign for the two weeks preceding it. So, I mean, it's, it's great.
There's not a lot of space.
You know, it's a small sign.
Yeah, and you don't really realize that. So, the next time we...
The next time we advertise, we'll condense what we put. She did it on two scrolls, which is great. That was a great solution. But I think in moving forward, we'll, I'll try and use it more anytime we need, we're doing something in town, and I would minimize the outage, so...
Yeah, the book suggests that you write it so that it's at a glance, or you can get and understand everything, just...
Yeah, I don't mind sitting at that red light now, because I just sit there and see what I missed, or what I didn't have. Yeah, I know.
Is that why we hear all the words outside?
Yeah, I think.
Wayne, anything else?
That's it.
Mayor's report, I just have one comment. I want to thank Chris and Stacy. They're here every meeting. They give us great coverage. We really appreciate you guys being here and for the coverage that we get in both Latrobe Bulletin and the Tribune Review, so thank you both. We've gotten some heroes. Does anyone have anything else for the good of the order before we adjourn to executive session? We are going to take an executive session to discuss matters of personnel.
Yeah, I'd like to publicly thank Marco's Pizza. They donated pizza for the last Neighborhood Watch meeting, and it was very much appreciated, so...
Oh, that's wonderful.
And they weren't even asked to donate.
That's wonderful.
They were called to order. Susan called to order it through them, and when they found out what we were doing, they said, oh, we'll just donate it.
That's fantastic. Wonderful. Thank you.
I want to personally thank them, too.
Anything else? Can I adjourn, or do I have to go back and adjourn?
You can adjourn, but you have to announce at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. What?
I know, but it's...
Absolutely adjourned, okay. Meeting adjourned?
Next meeting. I'll have to adjourn media.